All right, if you. If you again have the compelling vision narrative piece with the vision statement is the one in color. I'd like for us to share this together in unison as we have the past couple of weeks. Will you join me? Together as the Church of the Brethren, we will passionately live and share the radical transformation and holistic peace of Jesus Christ through relationship-based neighborhood engagement. To move us forward, we will develop a culture of call and equipping disciples who are innovative, adaptable, and fearless. Now, if you will turn in that same document to page three. Tonight, we are covering, if we were doing the Bible study as it was laid out in thirteen sessions, we're covering sessions, three sessions here this evening. That's why you see at the top of our study page, Passion Radical Transformation and Holistic Peace. So, I'm going to read the passionately live and share component on page three. Not going to take the time this evening because we have so much to cover. We will not look at the scriptures or read them, but I do invite your reading them again if you have already, or if you haven't, please do so. So, together in Christ, we passionately live and share. This vision, this compelling vision statement calls us to passionate discipleship, requiring us to embody an enthusiastic zeal that glows from within as we live and share with others. Our living should exhibit the vigor of one who is alive in Jesus Christ, thoroughly steeped in and guided by the Holy Spirit. The manner in which we live should radiate in our homes and our communities so our good works can be seen and God may be glorified. With the same passion that we live Christ-centered lives, we are called to share generously with our neighbors in deed and by word what we have experienced ourselves. We share so that our neighbors and our communities may participate in the blessing of abundant life in Jesus Christ now and for eternity. Our question for this first section this evening, the focus question is, what does it mean to you, to me, to be spiritually passionate? Note the focus statement. Being spiritually passionate means having a palpable enthusiasm informed by God's Word and evidenced by obedience to Jesus Christ. The purpose behind this spiritual passion is not selfish glorification, self-gloryfication, or selfish satisfaction. This spiritual passion or zeal exists to bring glory to God and bless others by supplying their needs. Being spiritually passionate draws others to see God's goodness through Jesus Christ. We're going to look at two scriptures around being spiritually passionate. The first one from Matthew five, the next one from 2 Corinthians six. So, I would invite a volunteer, if you would please, to read Matthew five, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Once that is read, I'd like another volunteer to read the narrative piece or the commentary that's right below it.
I'll read if it's in the paper that was handed out. Does it start in a dark room?
I'd like to have the scripture first. Yes, in the dark room, that's the, that's, that's the study guide.
I'll read the scripture and then Jenny, you can read that paragraph.
Okay.
"You are light of the world; a city built on a hill cannot be hid. No one after lighting a lamp puts it under the bushel basket, but on the lampstand, and it gives light to all in the house. In the same way, let you a light shine before others so that they may see your good works and give glory to your God in heaven."
"In a dark room, the smallest light draws attention. A pinch of salt can enhance the flavor of food. Using these two common concepts, Jesus gives us an idea of what it means to be spiritually passionate. Being spiritually passionate means having an observable zeal or an enthusiasm directed by the Holy Spirit for the same things that God is passionate about. This kind of zeal is informed by God's Word, Jesus, and radiates from within. It manifests itself in how we live and it affects our surroundings. Like salt with food, this spiritual passion preserves and enriches its environment. Much like a lit candle in a dark room, this spiritual passion is ignited by Christ to provide illumination and warmth for those who are in the dark and cold."
Thank you, Kevin and Jenny. Now, if I might have a person to read 2 Corinthians nine, six through fifteen, and then right below that on the study guide, the paragraph that begins, "Spiritual passion is observed."
I can do that, Eric.
All right.
2 Corinthians nine, six through fifteen. "Now this I say: He who sows sparingly shall also reap sparingly; and he who sows bountifully shall also reap bountifully. Let each one do just as he has purposed in his heart, not grudgingly or under compulsion; for God loves a cheerful giver. And God is able to make all grace abound to you, that always having all sufficiency in everything, you may have an abundance for every good deed. As it is written, He scattered abroad; He gave to the poor; His righteousness abides forever. Now, he who supplies seed to the sower and bread for the food will supply and multiply your seed for sowing and increase the harvest of your righteousness. You will be enriched in everything for all liberality, which through us is producing thanksgiving to God. For the ministry of this service is not only fully supplying the needs of the saints, but is also overflowing through many thanksgivings to God. Because of the proof given by this ministry, they will glorify God for your obedience to your confession of the gospel of Christ and for the liberality of your contribution to them and to all, while they also by prayer on your behalf yearn for you, yearn for you because of the surpassing grace of God in you. Thanks be to God for His indescribable gift." Spiritual passion is observed through obedient action to the teachings of Jesus Christ, period. Spiritual passion is often dampened by the idea of being consumed with nothing left to offer. Burnout is a real thing felt by many. Spiritual passion is also dampened by the idea of scarcity, not having enough. Fill in the blank. Amid the reality of burnout and scarcity, one must look to God. Zeal for the things of God should consume us, but we must turn to God often for replenishment. God's replenishment can come in the form of material goods, extra hands to help, and rest. We do well to accept these blessings so that we can continue every good work God has us, has for us to do.
Thank you, Chuck, for reading both portions. We're ready for some discussion on these two particular passages. What is your passion in life? How does your life give evidence of this passion? In the eyes of your family, what is your passion? And then it asks if your answer and your family's answer are not the same, we're invited to explain the difference. So, let's begin there, wherever you'd like to begin. What's your passion? How does it, how do you, how do, how do you give evidence of that in your life, et cetera, et cetera? I've, I've, I've had a little time to think about this, so I'll prime the pump. I, I believe my passions center around justice, equity, grace, and compassion. Those, those are what, those are what fuel me on a, pretty much a daily basis. Kathy?
Mine, mine is, my passion is volunteering. Eric, I don't get to do a lot of it because of the way I work, and I hope to do a lot of it when I retire, if my body holds up. The arthritis don't get the best of me first. But, yeah, I want to do a lot of things. I, I want to help with the pack of snack, you know, packing that. I want to be able to deliver the fruit. You know, these are things I haven't been able to do because I work. And, you know, just some other things, maybe help out at the Red Cross, maybe. I don't know. You know, I just, you know, I think we all have to give back some way, and this would be my way of trying to give back. But volunteering would be my passion, I guess, yeah.
Excellent, excellent, Kathy. Thank you for sharing that.
I'm going to echo what both of you have said. My passion is for justice and equity, racial healing. And when I was working, I felt so inadequate because I didn't have the time and didn't have the ability to do the kinds of volunteer things I'm able to do now. And I'm thankful God every day that I am healthy enough and retired, that I am able to do some things now. So, that's my passion.
All right, thanks, Sister. Thank you, Jenny. What fuels you, folks?
My passion is furthering the education of students. For a long time, it was actually working with the students, and for the last twenty years, it's trying to help teachers be more equitable and encouraging with their students as well.
Thank you, Bob.
I'd like to think one of my passions is following, or being a part of some of the programs of the Church of the Brethren. As I look back over my life, just being part of the brethren tribe has afforded me travel, service, and a multitude of experiences that I otherwise would not have had. And I feel more this was a passion as I get older. I, I was especially struck in all the past decade, I don't know how long ago it's been, when, when the message came out and we talked, which is the title of our Bible study, when Jesus moving into the neighborhood. That created a new passion for me to believe and do this.
Yeah, amen, amen.
Amen.
Yeah, yeah. Some, some of you may have heard me say this already when, and this is just confessional. When the denomination started talking about this whole compelling vision study, I was kind of like, nah. I'm, I'm being serious. I was kind of like, nah. We've had all these statements in the past. And I just kind of dismissed it. Plus, I was retiring about the time this was getting started, and I thought, I don't really feel like I even want to get engaged in that.
Amen.
But, but as, but as I've read it and reread it and studying this with you, it's like, wow. I am really repentant of my earlier dismissal of this process. While you're up. Others? Y'all have passions. I know you do.
I think my, one of my longtime passions has been just the general area of peace. From protesting wars and things like that to, to now when I feel like we have so many neighbors and so many in our country who are living in fear. And I, I kind of think at this point in my life, peace is almost the opposite of fear. Having some kind of peace that God will take care of us, that we ought to be careful about how we discuss certain things so that we do that respectfully and peacefully rather than causing more fear and problems. So, I don't know, I think through my life, that whole area, I've changed. You know, I've kind of changed emphasis through that area. But that, that general area of peace is one that really always has meant a lot to me.
Marilyn, I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
I think Eric, for, for me, my passion has changed over the years. And so, when I was a journalist, my passion was telling stories and narratives and revealing truths, hopefully, that could make a difference in people's lives and bring about needed change. And then after that, when I became an ethicist, it was more trying to work for the benefit of patients in the hospital and educating hospital staff and caregivers about how to go about doing that. And then, in retirement, I think it's become focused more on issues of justice and equity, but also realizing that to have a spiritual passion, you really have to, one, have a sort of experiential oneness with God. I mean, to really truly experience that, which is something that many of us strive for and never, never get there. But pursuing that and trying to tap into that more mystical part of, of being a Christian. So, I think it's, it evolves over your lifetime, at least it has for me.
Appreciate that, Chuck. Thank you. And I, I think you kind of named something that Kathy named earlier, her hopes for retirement so she can do more volunteering. But I think, thank you for naming that. I think our passions do change over the course of our lives. Yeah, but just, yeah, thank you for naming that. I, I'd like to ask us to think about the last part of that, this, this discussion before we move on to our, our next section here this evening. Consider this last under discussion where it says, "Consider the statement. Following your passion is a very me-centered view of the world. How can this statement be false? How can this statement be true?" Anybody want to care to respond to that?
I think you have to be careful that your passion doesn't end up for the purpose of feeding your ego. And I think that's always a danger. And so, it's, it's something that can, I think many people can very easily slip into, including myself. And it's, so I think it can be false if you're trying to do it the right way and true if you're doing it the wrong way.
Thanks, Chuck. Anybody else care to offer a thought?
Well, I think that some of the issues that we've discussed is such a two-edged sword. Is it ego or is it service? I think anybody that is in some level of service has to deal with that. And you can, I think you can certainly search the scriptures and be energized by certainly Christ Himself, the teachings of Paul, they, they all dealt with these very things. You know, the Corinthians verse on love, you know, your love can just be a noisy gone. We just have to be conscious of it. We have to reorient our consciousness so that it is not there, or is that?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you.
I will say that, you know, in the early days of Breakfast with Santa then, I was very interested in having it covered by the news media, and it was. And I would say it wasn't necessarily for me, but it was to promote our church. And I don't know if that's considered the same kind of thing. I, I guess I, I am torn with this between how do you promote your church without self-aggrandizing the church? And maybe that's okay, but I'll just mention that aspect.
Yeah, well, I appreciate what George and you both, Jenny, have to offer. I think it's a matter of continually doing an interior check, checking our hearts. You know, what's our, what's the drive, what's driving us? What's, you know, what's, you know, what's, yeah, who's this for? Yeah.
But I think there's a fine line between seeing things out in the world that we could serve, do. Fine line between, I want to do this and God calls me to do this. I mean, at least I struggle with that line. Because it all could conceivably in my brain seem worthy. But I think, I think it's, there's a difficult line between those two things.
A fine line, maybe.
But how do you know that God isn't calling you to do the things you want to do if it's serving others at the same time?
Well, if you're working out of your passion, I think it is things that you want to do because that's the way God's wired you up. But I think there's also this thing about pride. And I don't know how many of you were taught as a child in Sunday school that, you know, pride is a really, really bad thing. And you better guard against that. Pride goeth before a fall. But you can, you can kind of, I don't know, if you, if you lean on that too heavily, it almost becomes a sense of false humility to me. I don't know, I think this is a really interesting statement. Following your passion is a very me-centered view of the world. It, it's, it's really an interesting thing to think about.
I don't want to push us, but we have two other sections to cover yet. And so, if, if you feel like we're okay, I'm going to move on. We're going to look secondly this evening at radical transformation. So, back to the colored page of document, the compelling visions document, page four. We're called to spiritual passion, we're called to experience radical transformation. Radical transformation occurs only through the work of the Holy Spirit. It is characterized by an all-encompassing profound change with those who place full faith and belief in God incarnate as revealed in Scripture Jesus Christ. This inner transformation manifests outwardly through a life that turns away from the values of a world, alienated from God, and seeks to understand and embody God's holy values as revealed in Jesus Christ. Life, or excuse me, lives radically transformed by Jesus Christ become channels for the flow of Christ's powerful grace, unconditional love, and holistic peace in the world around us, where the Holy Spirit continues to draw people into radical transformation for the glory of God. So, what does it mean to be radically transformed through Jesus Christ? I'm going to skip over the focus statement and invite you to the next page, and we'd like to have someone read Romans, chapter twelve, the first two verses. Romans twelve, one and two.
I can read that.
Very well, very good.
I have a different addition than some of y'all, but we can follow along. "Therefore, I urge you, brothers in view of God's mercy, to offer your bodies as living sacrifices, holy and pleasing to God. This is your spiritual act of worship. Do not conform any longer to the pattern of this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind. Then you will be able to test and approve what God's will is, His good, pleasing, and perfect will."
Thank you, Jenny. Paul gives encouragement to the members of the church at Rome because he knows the pressures they face on a daily basis to conform to the world rather than the will of God. Sound familiar, folks? He urges them to be transformed by the renewing of your mind. How do you think that happens? What resources or guidance does God provide to aid in this transformation? And how does this transformation help us resist the pressure to conform to the world? There you go.
Isn't that all about the fellowship of church?
Vicky, we're having a little difficulty hearing you.
Is this any better?
Better.
Don't you think this is about the fellowship of the church, our ability to listen, love one another, correct one another?
We got fellowship of the church, but we not sure what you said after that.
The fellowship of the church that we love one another and can correct one another. In an intimate fellowship, you can do that.
Okay, all right. So, I'm hearing, we're hearing you say that part of the process of being transformed by the renewing of our mind is in being, embedding ourselves in the fellowship of the church. Okay, thank you.
My, I have the, I think it's the New Living Translation, and that Romans, well, the second verse, verse two, says, "Let God transform you into a new person by changing the way you think." By changing the way you think. And I think just like Vicky said, sometimes that, that can happen within the fellowship of believers, especially if we're able to work our way through those difficult things. I think it can also happen as we allow ourselves to be exposed to other opinions, or if we're widely read. A, a lot of different things can, as we mature, you know, my way of thinking has changed a lot as I've gotten older. So, yeah, it's, I think it's a lot of things that go into radical transformation.
Can I read it from the message?
Sure.
Please.
I was getting ready to.
Great minds.
So, here's what I want you to do. God helping you. Take your ordinary, everyday life, your sleeping, eating, going to work, and walking around life, and place it before God as an offering. Embracing what God does for you is the best thing you can do for Him. Don't become so well adjusted to your culture that you fit in it without even thinking. Instead, fix your attention on God. You'll be changed from the inside out. Readily recognize what He wants from you and quickly respond to it. Unlike the culture around you always dragging you down to its level of immaturity. God brings out the best of you, develops well formed maturity in you.
Thank you, Jenny. Peterson can do a pretty good job of really amplifying the scripture, can't he?
Yes.
I think in that mission prayer that we shared on Sunday and that you're going to hear over and over for the next several Sundays. I think the first line of it was, God, where will your spirit lead today? And I think that kinda, for me, that sort of captures what the message was talking about.
Yeah. I wanna, I wanna push this a little bit. The, the next partial paragraph, or second paragraph under discussion on this passage says that Paul's radical transformation caused him to reach out to all people. How can you, how can I do the same today? And I think just as importantly, how will you deal with the internal opposition of acceptance of all people within the church or family?
Explain.
Ah, yeah.
Well, I'll explain very briefly with a, kind of a, well, it's a story I remember from long ago. When Clyde Schallenberger was the head chaplain at Johns Hopkins, and this was in the beginning of the whole HIV AIDS awareness and a lot of, a lot of gay men being afflicted with HIV and AIDS. And he tells the story of ministering to a, he told the story of ministering to a, an HIV patient male who had been barred at, from the doors of his church by the deacons. The first Sunday he tried to go back to church after being diagnosed. There's internal opposition.
Gosh, in a real way.
Yeah, real well.
In my mind, this whole discussion is centered on having an open mind. We're dealing with so many people in our society today who have closed minds. You can't grow, you can't become a better person in any sense of the word with a closed mind. So knowing how to open those minds, I think, is a big part of what we're talking about.
Hmm, thank you for that. So a transformed mind is having at least an open mind.
I misread. I was reading chapter two instead of chapter 12, which, you know, anyway, but I thought, I thought Paul's words in chapter two are kind of interesting. And I'm reading, I forget which translation I brought. I mean, from the new, uh, new revised standard. And verses one and two say, therefore you have no excuse whoever you are when you judge others, or in passing judgment on another, you condemn yourself also, because you, the judge, are doing the very same thing. You say, we know that God's judgment on those who do such things is in accordance with truth. And then he goes on to say, imagine that when you judge those who do such things and do them yourself, you will escape judgment, or do you despise riches? And then finally it goes down to that we are called to repentance. And I'm wondering if that theme is following through a little bit here in chapter 12 as we're thinking about the internal opposition of acceptance to other people, in terms of how these questions are being posed. You know, and of course, the first image that comes to my mind is, you know, the speck in the other person's eye and the log in your own eye, kind of, Jesus talks in the parables. So that's kind of where my thought process is going at this point, just as I'm listening.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bev and I have been, been reading a book by Kirsten
Powers.
Powers, yeah, Saving Grace. And a few chapters back, we've, we've been reading it together. She talked about the difference. It was helpful to me. Talked about the difference between judging and judgmentalism. Judging is kind, my interpretation would be kind of like discerning. You know, trying, trying to figure out what's going on here and, you know, making some kind of a judgment after some careful discernment. Judgmentalism set to me is more like condemnation, non-acceptance. So that, that's, that just comes to me as we're, as we're dealing with this last little bit of discussion on this passage of radical transformation. Any others? We still have holistic peace to cover yet?
Maybe, maybe another part of the radical transformation involves really getting a good understanding or an acceptance of what God's mercy really is. And how, how big and wide it is and that it's, it's for everyone. If grace is really true, if grace is really true. Yeah, it's, you know, it's not just, it's not just for me. And I, I think, I think often we don't have a real, real good understanding of God's mercy and grace. And maybe if, if we don't, then it's kind of hard to, I mean, we're not the one, well, yeah, we do have to extend grace to others, but it's hard, makes it harder to do that. I don't know, that's just a thought. As I think about internal opposition.
Right, right.
Particularly in the church, you know, it's, it's really easy to other, other people.
Well, we've
To, to cast aspersions or
Yeah, I think, I can say we, and I say we, Bev and I, but I suspect this might be true of most families, thinking back to some family dynamics. A nephew some years ago and a young lady, they got pregnant out of wedlock and she did not have the best reputation. And she was looked upon by the family as the other, you know, yeah. I'm, I think we're gonna, I apologize, but if we're gonna cover the rest of this material, I'm gonna have to invite us to move on. So if you'll turn to page five again, in the compelling vision statement document, page five, holistic peace. I think it's important that we read this. So I'm gonna read a little bit and then I'll invite someone else to read a bit. And then if, if necessary, a third person can pick up. Page five, holistic peace. In the beginning, God created the world in shalom. Shalom is not simply the absence of violence, but rather the presence of a holistic peace, right or healthy relationships in four different ways. Between us and God, between us and her other human beings, between us and ourselves, between us and all of creation. Someone else?
In Genesis three, all four of these relationships become broken. Adam and Eve become estranged from God. Their relationship with each other becomes distorted. They know their sin and experience internal brokenness in their relationship with animals, and even the ground is cursed. The rest of the biblical story is an account of God's varied and ongoing attempts to restore this original shalom, ultimately culminating in sending Jesus Christ to bring about this restoration through His life, death, and resurrection. Next.
When we speak of holistic peace, we are referring to shalom. Since God's kingdom has already begun, but not yet complete, we are called by God to strive for and participate in shalom, both in small, everyday ways and in large systemic ways. For example, to help others learn about Jesus and become His disciples is to participate in shalom. To work to transform conflict, whether between individuals or nations, is to participate in shalom. To directly address mental health issues is to participate in shalom. To care for God's creation that has been entrusted to us is to participate in shalom.
Marilyn has kind of segued into this earlier for us. The Church of the Brethren holds an understanding of peace that the world needs so much. We have declared that all war is sin, and yet the holistic peace of Jesus Christ goes far beyond war to touch on all aspects of life. We leave an attention between personal peacemaking and systemic peacemaking, thereby addressing systems, policies, and procedures that perpetuate a lack of shalom. Because both lessons are taught by Jesus Christ and both are important, we have the opportunity in a divided world to bring about justice with peace for all God's children and all of God's creation. I'd like, we have two scriptures, Matthew five nine, excuse me, thirty eight to forty eight, and Micah four one to five. If we could get two readers, please.
I have the five nines.
Thank you.
All righty. God blesses those who work for peace, or they will be called the children of God.
Kathy, do you mind reading thirty eight through forty eight as well?
No, I don't. Let me get a, okay. You have heard that the law of Moses says, if an eye is injured, injure the eye of the person who did it. If a tooth gets knocked out, knock out the tooth of the person who did it. But I say, don't resist an evil person. If you are slapped on the right cheek, turn the other too. If you are ordered to court and your shirt is taken from you, give your coat too. If a soldier demands that you carry his gear for a mile, carry it two miles. Give it, give to those who ask and don't turn away from those who want to borrow. You have heard that the law of Moses says, love your neighbor and hate your enemy. But I say, love your enemies, pray for those who persecute you. In that way, you will be acting as true children of your Father in heaven, for He gives His sunlight to both the evil and the good. And He sends rain on the just and on the unjust too. If you love only those who love you, what good is that? Even corrupt taxpayers do that, I mean, tax collectors do that much. If you are kind only to your friends, how are you different from anyone else? Even pagans do that. But you are to be perfect, even as your Father in heaven is perfect.
All right, thanks Kathy. I think we'll dispense with the Micah passage, so we have a little more time for discussion here. At the bottom of page seven in our study guide, let's start here. Who are the disinherited in Jesus's day? Lepers?
Yeah, the poor.
Poor.
Women.
Women.
Children.
Children.
Essentially handicapped.
Uh huh, the sick, tax collectors.
Prostitutes.
Prostitutes. How about today, in our neighborhood, our society today, who are the disinherited?
Homeless people. They don't be honest.
Cashiers.
Cashiers, you say?
Cashier, like a grocery store cashier.
Oh, okay.
Low, low wage owner.
Okay.
I don't understand cashier.
Were you getting at low rate, low wage people?
I think it has to do with how people treat them. We don't tend to look at that position as a position of value.
That would be all fast food workers, all janitors, all, I mean, that's more than cashiers.
Well, I, I was trying to keep it specific because I think that, I think part of what Jesus does is he humanizes the specificity of the, so when we say something like the children or the widow, we're naming a specific demographic or a specific group of people.
Right.
So, I mean, it, it is low wage, what, low wage work, but that's, I think in the context of Matthew, that's too broad. I think it's meant to be specific.
So garbage collectors.
Yeah.
Maybe it's anybody that we're able to easily look past and not even, not even recognize them as a person of worth. Again, it's the othering that we do.
Are you all able online to hear us here?
Yes. All, all the people that became essential workers during a pandemic. The grocery stores, shelf stockers, the cashiers, all those people became essential workers, the farm workers in the fields, because otherwise we had enough food.
So custodians, yes. Waitresses, yeah. So what would holistic peace look like for those who are disinherited or outsiders today? What would holistic peace look like? Minimum wage, I'm hearing. All right, that's a start.
Higher minimum wage.
Hearing the words, thank you. Maybe just making eye contact, looking them in the eye.
Absolutely.
Reading their name tag.
Calling them by name.
Yeah, yeah.
Going out early in the morning and meeting your garbage collector and saying hello. When they come through at six in the morning.
Yeah, wave to them.
Those are all, those are all good things. Those are all just positive, healthy, human nature types of things. What else, though? Might we?
I, I want to add the migrant and the refugee. They have been given, we, very judgmental about them.
Yes, yes.
For me, it's not just some of these categories. It's people who I know I don't agree with.
Yeah.
Just keeping my mouth shut sometimes is the best thing I can do.
Well, and that's, thank you Marilyn, but, but it, I, I think it's also about making some room in our lives for people who are disinherited or considered outsiders. Uh, Wayne and Vicky, you guys seem to do a good job of that. I mean, you just shared last week that you had invited into your home a father and his son. That's, I think that's a, I think that's a real concrete example of what we're talking about here. Not everybody can do that. Not everybody's called to do that, but you do that well. Anything else to add, folks?
This may be backing up a little bit, but we, we've been using a term today as other days of, of radical transformation. And in our discussion on peace, I think that the idea of peace with creation and developing a spirituality centered around creation, the environment, is a radical new thing. It's not, I think of my grandfather who was a minister a long time ago. That was probably a, didn't even cross his mind that the peace of Jesus Christ had to do with the land and the environment and where he lived. And I think we're in that transitional period where churches, even conservative churches in there are beginning to embrace the idea of peace with our creation.
Appreciate that, George, thank you.
Eric?
Yes, go ahead, please. I was gonna say, we got started a little late, so we're gonna go just a little longer.
I would say we need to not just expect the outsider to assimilate to us, but that we also need to do some compromising and understanding and living in their light and in their shoes, too. It would be very wrong of me as a teacher to teach all my immigrant students everything about the United States and our culture, and never acknowledge the differences and, and include their history and their heritage and their culture.
Very true, Wendy, thank you, thank you. Good addition. Well, thank you all. We have a closing that requires three voices. Could I get voice, someone volunteer to be voice one?
I will.
All right, Lori, thank you, voice two.
I'll do voice two.
Bob's voice two, voice three. Who was that?
I said, unless George wants to.
I didn't.
She said she would do it unless you wanted to.
No, go ahead, Wendy.
All right.
Let the, own land.
Okay, readers, voice one, two, and three. Will you lead us through this closing this evening, please?
Hear the good news of Jesus from the Sermon on the Mount.
Blessed are the peacemakers, for they will be called children of God.
If we are called children of God, does that mean we will look like God?
Does that mean we will all have white hair and beards?
Of course not, but we might learn that the Hebrew word shalom means total well-being, and we might start implementing new ideas on how to be God's children.
Does this mean that we might get into good trouble as God's children, like Congressman John Lewis learned from his Christian mother and father?
Well, the Sermon on the Mount says, "Blessed are you when people revile you and persecute you and utter, utter all kinds of evil against you falsely on my account."
So what do peacemaking, making children of God do, anyway?
In his letter to the Ephesians, Paul says, "We get to build up the kingdom by tearing down the dividing walls."
I love tearing stuff down.
And then we get to replace all that hostility with shalom. Total well-being, peace that passes all understanding, caring for all God's creation, and belonging in the family of God.
Just like Jesus taught us.
Good trouble, like turning the other cheek and getting into good trouble by sharing another way of living.
Like the prophet Micah said.
They will beat their swords into plowshares.
And their spears into pruning hooks.
Nations shall not lift up sword against nation.
Neither shall they learn war anymore.
But they shall all sit under their own vine and fig tree.
And no one shall make them afraid.
Do justice.
Love mercy.
Walk humbly with God.
And all God's people could say? Amen. Thank you all for your participation this evening. We're together again next Wednesday evening, and we will be looking at Jesus Christ as teacher, redeemer, and Lord. Until then, shalom.
Shalom.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you.